Good morning.
Good morning.
The special meeting, Slant House Work Session for the Southern Shore's Town Council for April twenty-third, two thousand nineteen is now over. Before I ask you to join the pledge, I would like to say, take a few minutes to go over the purposes and points of each meeting. This special meeting, pledge and work session is being held for preliminary due to the budget officer's grant, projected general funding expenses and revenues to be subsequently included in his proposed annual operating budget. The budget officer will submit this proposed, his proposed annual operating budget to the council according to Northside Town Statute one fifty-nine dash eleven on May seventh, two thousand nineteen. And on the same day pursuant to Northside Town Statute one fifty-nine dash twelve, the budget officer will validate comments for what remain available for public inspection and received written comments. Also, on that same day, the budget officer will recommend the town council set a public hearing for June the fourth, two thousand nineteen. At this time, and after required advertisement and notice of public hearing, any purchase agreed to be urged opposed by the municipal committee. Subsequent to public hearing, and as required by Northside Town Statute one fifty-nine dash thirteen, the town council must adopt its budget from July first, two thousand nineteen. The town council, in that in importance, adopting a budget may pursuant to that same Northside Town Statute, make appropriations and levy taxes in excess of some greater or less than those recommended for the budget officer. Thank you. Please join the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd ask you to join a moment of silence if you do. I'd like to keep those people in mind, as to what happened last week. It's a long way from home, but it still is, and it's true if you're pushing. If you see something like that, it's all right. Please join me.
Thank you. I'm going to motion to adopt the agenda. I'd like to amend the agenda. I'd like to make a motion that we add public comments after item number five of the agenda to give the public opportunity to comment on the discussions and the presentation of the budget.
I'll start with the motion. Can you put it in session? All the bearers here, say hi. You want to post? Post is made and carried. Do you have a little follow-up coming? Do you have item three now to wait for item six? That was your second.
Yeah.
We're going to add, probably add it a second.
What's your role up here? You want to... I missed on the speaker. Are you going to move the public comment period down just for a second?
No, 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 a second.
You want to ask for a second?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. I mean, you want me to restate the motion?
Do you get that? Just what I am saying, you want to add anything?
Yes, you do.
Talking of maybe caring, add a second public comment. Is that my call on the town or is that not it?
You got trouble with public comments.
Probably agree with you. I'm still moving that public comment.
No, we were adding.
Yeah, I said, I thought you had this agreement. Not mine, I wanted you to position others here. Thanks, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning. Good morning, members of the town council, Mr. Asko, et cetera. Excuse me. Good morning, everybody. Sixty-nine Hickory Trail. I appreciate what you said, Mr. Mayor, at the beginning of this meeting about this being preliminary, and these are projected revenues and expenses. I just wanted to urge you to consider an additional allocation for monies to go toward traffic reduction in the cut-through area to block the left turn lane at one fifty-eight and Dogwood Trail, if that's the modus operandi that you choose in order to reduce the traffic that cuts through during the summertime on the weekends. A lot of people experience great misery on those weekends, and I think that the town council can help to alleviate that by allocating some funds to go toward traffic reduction. I'd like to point out that some of that money might come from a reduction in the monies that are going toward trash collection because currently you have two trash pickups during the summer months. I would submit that two are not necessary, that as a rental property owner for thirty years now, I can tell you from anecdotal evidence that my renters don't put their trash out except when they leave on the last day, and that it would be much more expedient to require rental property owners to have more trash receptacles and more recycling receptacles rather than to have two pickups of trash during the summer months. And certainly in the year-round area, you rarely see people putting out their trash on Friday. I also would ask that you consider allocating some funds for recording of board of adjustment hearings. They're coming more frequently, they're very important, they're quasi-judicial, they're a record that can be used later in a superior court if there's an appeal, and I strongly urge you to consider that item as well. Planning board meetings perhaps also, some videotaping of planning board meetings, especially those that are very substantive in nature, for example, on the non-conforming lots discussion. In general, I would like to urge the allocation of funds for traffic reduction. As the editor of a well-read blog, The Southern Shore's Beacon, I hear a lot from residents, homeowners, year-rounders about this problem. I've already been approached and asked to present to you today a request for allocation of funds, and also to ask if you would schedule a hearing on the traffic issue because residents want to come before you and state their case, their suffering during the summer months. And I'm one of those who suffers, but not as badly as those people on Sea Oats Trail, Wax Myrtle, and Hillcrest, as well as Duck Road, of course. So, I appreciate your consideration on these matters. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joe Van Geest. One more, Joe. Good morning, Mayor, town council, town staff, and citizens. Joe Van Geest, two-two-eight North Dogwood Trail. Just have two requests. First, regarding last, or the current budget year, there are two transfers of funds into the revenue stream, into the revenues, each somewhere in a neighborhood of two to three-hundred thousand dollars. I believe I understand where they came from and why they came from, but I would appreciate some discussion of that when presenting comparison of budgets. Make sure I do understand it, and also, just for the record. And then, secondly, I see a three-hundred and some thousand dollar expenditure for debt service, which I believe is for the fire station. And I don't know that we actually have incurred or entered into any type of arrangement for securing funds, long-term, for the fire station. If we have, I'm happy to be educated about it. So, please describe how that amount was calculated, and what arrangements being made, and what mechanism or instrument is considered or planned or working, being worked on for the long-term funding. Thank you.
Thank you. I suppose, this time I'm voting on the comments, we're going on a silent floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is your special meeting for budget, proposed budget will be, and today is what has been posted in the meeting book, and also what is before you, looking at the budget officer's proposed budget, as we find our state laws and seven here, will look like in May unless directed otherwise by council action to propose something else. This is a summary of proposed balance budget of sixty-one-two million dollars, less than this year's sixty-one-sixty budget. This proposed balance budget is what I'll be recommending filing, and as a budget officer's proposed balance budget may settle unless to be the council by your action directly changes. Will include many expenses to reduce services or increasing revenue like at the moment. And finally, unless the council directs that line, any new expenses added to my proposed balance budget, I have the council, will be shown as proposed as funded from the town's undesignated fund lines unless you direct other plans. I see in your agenda today, the mayor's approved an agenda item that specifically recognizes your time during this meeting, when any council member is in order to make a motion for the council to act and directly changes to my proposed budget, that will be filed in May seventh. Yours will of course be open for review at that time, and also subject to a public hearing in June before the front of action. And just one final note, although proposed budget will be filed on the May seventh, today's draft has been placed in the published book for today's R.B., and has been viewable by the public, and that means that the policy continues to be viewable by the public until May meeting, that way, and then that may be, subject to public review continuously through May until your public hearing in June, if you can invite them to put in comments or if you take the public comments and ask them to, we've written comments and asked them to the council. To begin on the proposed draft budget, what it will look like, page one, which can submit to you is a summary of the six-point-two million-dollar balance budget. All lines with exactly the same descriptive lines as what has been in the budgets in years past. Page one showing to you the confirmation of the summary of the revenues, which will go over in May to a little bit more detail, total of six million two hundred twenty thousand and forty-six. Also, the expenditures, like apartment or chain, and the balance at six-point-two eight forty-six. Based on this year's tax base, taxable base of the town of Southern Shore's, one penny of the twenty-two cent levy equals one hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Continuing the passage summary on page two is a line item description of the projected revenues for the town this year. The first group layer should have been property taxes, three million eight one four sixty, a slight increase from last year, but the important thing is for public to remember that the property taxes in this town's fund about fifty percent of the town's operating budget, do not fund a hundred percent, they only fund about fifty percent. The second set of revenues there are occupancy, sales tax, and transfer tax, and which is described as the tourist taxes by some writers, but anyway, they comprise about thirty-three percent of the town's budget. You can see the occupancy tax this year, relatively flat, small dip in the projection. The sales tax, there's a little bit of an increase in the land transport taxes projected a little bit of this, so they total at two million one sixty-five out of one. The other revenues, about midway down, I'll begin with unrestricted and government revenues, our franchise taxes, and other state taxes that come in, as described here on the line, and they're projected three hundred and fifty, two hundred, twenty fifty thousand two hundred dollars. The next items are the restricted government, income of revenues, one of which is the power bill, that is projected one hundred and eighteen thousand this year from the economy of transportation. The next two items are grant projections, not as much, one of them not as much as last year projected. Those two, again, however, and the next is the channel access grant, the government channel access grant, as well as the occupancy tax, shoreline stabilization grant, received each year twenty-four thousand dollars. Page three at the top is the total of those restricted government revenues, one hundred eighty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-two projected. And the next item there, in the other category, permits and fees, slight tick-up, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand. The last item under the other revenues, you'll see interest income, sale, projected rental, miscellaneous, body on brand, and also the outer banks, excuse me. Outer banks community validation allocation. The border claim next is the Dari County Tourism Bureau, the army grants, projected support for this coming fiscal year for the town of Southern Shore, and so the anti-teenage grant line, so that is a reduction in loans due. You can see the total of other revenues, total there of one hundred and nine thousand six hundred, and then the total makes seventy-eight one eight-two, all those previous to the others, unrestricted, restricted permits and fees and other things. So, those are my items for the revenues. Going to down departmental expenses on the fourth, and the department. Starting at the top, a general conservation in each line of salaries in the town, there's projected two-point-five percent cost of living adjustment for each employee in the town in the salaries. Also, the next line item, of course, is social security, the retirement, mandatory retirement cost, Greek health insurance, projected cost, council compensation, council travel training, and our unemployment insurance payments. Getting back to the next item, legal services I had highlighted, this is an item that has been drastically increased from last year's original approved appropriation of budget. During this year, council increased this line fifty thousand dollars, and that was due to the number of permanent appeals with the town level, and it be of the county level, permanent officer level, which we can anticipate. That was due to those and other legal matters that the council may have filed in and anticipated for this year, so it projected that one hundred thousand dollars next year, the council. The next items are pretty much the same, I go down, you'll see the line item there on computer services, at seventy-five thousand dollars. The computer services are due to renewal of a three-year service contract, which includes a ten percent down payment and monthly charges to replace all the computers, battery backups, servers, and including service calls. Office three sixty-five license, software license, and annual tours, which are disclosed to all departments in the town, and includes quarterly charges for the website maintenance and all kinds of the town's social media as a public record. So, that is why that particular line is projected as an increase. Moving down to another line item, equipment lease and maintenance, didn't want to comment to you, that is a reduction from nineteen thousand to sixteen thousand, we have renegotiated our computer contract for the next few years, so that is a reduction. Also, there is a municipal election this year, so there's a cost to the town contributing to the county board elections proposed. The other line item of interest, we'll come down to what's shown as contracted services, there's an increase from three thousand to nine thousand one hundred. That is for the classification of pay study, which we are now doing, at five years. That would be the classification, I study of towns, employment, classifications for jobs, and also for pay for those particular classified positions. So, typically, towns have a practice, and who has recommended by state, they apply to state in the year, and it's a form of your life, so it's a different initiative. There will be a contract involved in the admin and department, human resources officer and the council home health. The next item of interest at the bottom there is cleaning the town of buildings, it's a change from twenty thousand to one thousand, and it's possibly proposing to do that in the house with the addition of a part-time position in the corporate office department for the thing that is probably feasible for us to do it ourselves, especially with the security areas of the police department, so we're proposing that as a change in shift here in the house. That totals the admin department at one million eight six fifty-six. Looking now over to page seven, the planning and third department, called West, if we have. Thank you, Mayor, good morning, the town council. There is a reduction in the overall request this year from last year, or just go through the changes, maybe there's change, starting with contracted services. It's twenty-six hundred eighty, funding for citizens' sort of quality software, which we're looking at behind years' name, and this increase by eighty-two hundred because that was required for a first-year payment. The next change would be the travel line, which was decreased by three thousand thirty-six due to the high position of the county of the discretion. The next line would be training, which was decreased by thirty-one hundred also, which is not included in the municipal county of the year. Supplies is going to increase by two thousand to have more fine candidates and a lot of students going to the permanent officer bonus pay area, to give them a win, both of those coming in. Uniforms are increased by two hundred for some new tenants that, although short for the town of yours. And then, lastly, going down to store land designation, decreased by five hundred due to secure and property research for potential store landlords who receive applications, and also the funding will be in place to combine plots, on which were properties that have been designated as a store landowners, usually one free designated, and also a partnership. That concludes my recording of planning and working. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next part is page ten, list of all, Chief, so.
Thank you. Starting with rear development, there's a decrease of fifteen hundred dollars, and there are probably the tuition for a minimum of one officer that may need kind of this close to forty, so we're going to use that. Computer services, you see an increase of twenty-five hundred dollars. This covers a lot of our RNS, RDTs, and laptops and printers, and the increase is highly best, and it's really in process right now of ten thousand, several body worn channels, and based on the trip that one can make, and if it suits us, it's possible to get a hundred twenty-five hundred dollars in computer services percentage. Printing is the same, advertising is thirty, it's the same established period. We've been able to decrease our travel by two thousand dollars, employ a lot around the two thousand, and this covers a lot of our schools and training. Deuces is pretty, it's over ninety-seven established period. Training, we're going to decrease that by three thousand dollars and fifteen thousand and twelve thousand. And also receive a five hundred dollar grant, which is a good incentive, towards a regular officer, who's a training, they're going to do it here. Medical, uniforms and supplies, contract services, and equipment lease, they're all going to be the same as ever. Equipment purchases, we've added thirteen body worn cameras for those who are pursuing to establish, and stay there. You can see the work done, as far as sending the places. We have, we can do with any kind of felony that we're bothering, we have to, actually video and audio, the system, and, I have paid purchase on the ground, that is, about seven years ago, that is no longer one, seven, twenty, two thousand dollars to replace that, as well, that's something that's got to be put into the study. Vehicle maintenance and repairs, that means assembly and stuff, vehicle operations, as long as you fuel, right now it's gone crazy, but right now we're going to try to make it work, work, and, 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 contingency is still the same, capital outage, which is the year replacement, that's going to be the same. And then, we also budget again, about seventeen dollars an hour for any resource officer, which is a non-spending, a lot of times, which is bringing someone up, says, the beach patrol and. We are going to try again this year, apply for a couple of grants, so we see the number that we could, I have checked in the budget, in order to apply grants, these grants, is a total of just over sixty-two thousand, sixty-two thousand two sixty-four. One of those grants may be a match grant, but on the United, if we're successful, for now, then we're just going to have to have them for the.
Thank you, Chief. Council, the next part, streets, bridges, beaches, and towns, are page thirteen, I just want to do that, and that, and, 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 but, I wanted to, the top items are the same basically as last year, science, maintenance, engineering, organs, services, street maintenance, brush trimming, bridge maintenance. The beach profile study, that represents a mountain, was discussed in the beginning of Ken Wilson during FYI, to be, fulfilling during FYI nineteen twenty, that way, it's all separate from what he's been doing now, that you are approved, survey, so that's what we're going to pick up, another survey, and another evaluation for the next fiscal year, in FYI nineteen twenty, allowing to continue off, we're working spring, that , and, 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 Dropping all the way down to FYI nineteen twenty, infrastructure projects to six sixty-two, three forty. Representing that was computed based on the policy you voted on last year to put in for infrastructure projects. Based on that form of tax ready. That amount will be held until you decide when to appropriate that out. By practice, you have done that after a public hearing in July, opposed to the odds of this budget for June. So again, it's for infrastructure projects. I know the C I P committee will be making its own recommendation to you on June, but obviously that's council discretion for infrastructure projects. Waterway maintenance and repair, the same, our contribution to that would be other three users of our day workers in getting that back. Storm break cleanup is the same. And then just to get it out there, that is for cleanup of non-declared storms. We got a mark, A T X on the contract, but we have a different rate, but there is extra storm cleanup that is not declared and not picked up via the cleaning process. Volcanic maintenance and repair, we got a proposed reduction in that for this year based on conditions. So the total for streets, bridges, beaches and canals this year would be composed of eight hundred forty-two thousand sixty-seven dollars. For that department. Then for public works department, page fifteen, Mr. Bradley will be there if he is to play for.
Morning, Councilor. Starting off with training, an increase to three thousand dollars for some government training. Training, travel, uniform, stay the same, dues and subscription increased from three hundred thirty to three hundred fifty dollars. Supplies, stay the same, advertising, went five hundred to four hundred fifty. Safety compliance, up to fifteen hundred. Town dono, maintenance and repairs is a reduction to thirty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. Beautification, it's the same. Put in lease and maintenance, increase to six to five hundred dollars. Vehicle maintenance, vehicle maintenance and repair, increased by five hundred dollars. Vehicle operations. Stays the same, miscellaneous stays the same. Capital outlay. Goes to nothing without a repurchase of vehicles here. Medical testing stays the same. Put in purchase, increase, working by, using motor, replace, replace a whole one that's starting to give us a lot of trouble. We're going to get a tandem axle utility trailer to replace. Some aging family equipment, nine thousand for a new hydraulic pump trailer. Now it's in poor shape, and we have to spend a lot of money to keep it going for another year. Just some various tools and additions to our equipment. Flow on stabilization, twenty-three thousand dollars, parking lot maintenance, stay the same, two thousand. With a total of five hundred thousand, compared to four sixty-nine.
Right, thank you. Next department is the sanitation department, page eighteen. Shows you residential collection, projected cost of one hundred eight thousand two twenty-five. Commercial collection, twenty-six thousand three hundred. Land and field ticket fee, shows there one ninety, one hundred ninety thousand is what we projected. However, that's going to be increased slightly when the final draft proposal comes out, and here's why. Five days ago, we notified that Dare County, all the towns have notified Dare County that they have been stating that they're making fuel surcharge per tonne from Southern Shore to Virgin County for you on behalf of the towns. We looked at that and discussed that with the county, and they're right, we're obligated by contract and payment for that. The town is not paying for that, I don't know why, just know we've got to deal with that. Our whole regional side of the place we're talking, and always a deal with the county, the county picked it up. So that's going to increase slightly, the next one comes out, is about two dollars, two dollars and seventy-five cents a tonne. For our tonne extra, Southern Shore's tonne extra from Southern Shore to Virgin County, so there will be an increase of that. Yes, there is a tonnage increase. We called this year, I think, two meetings, I spoke to the faculty, there's an increase in actual tonnes slightly. Recycling collection, we're showing it, it's the same projection. Miscellaneous for that certain department, and then also, large item pickup. This was an increase based on our agreement with May disposal last year, it would come to a wheel cost, I guess it's two times the spring and fall, the large time pickup. And then, Limmel Ranch will move as a slight tick in that based on his, um, C P I, fewer surcharges. So the total sanitation this year, I'll project eight to seven sixteen, I don't know. Next department is page twenty, fire services. Line item number one, contract fire protection. This amount is the exact same as last year per your agreement with the Southern Shore's volunteer fire department. In the new contract, effective July one, two thousand nineteen, this was the exact same as the year before, so that's why it's five hundred five, nine fourteen. Also, so much of your action, we're committed to handling their annual debt service, which is also in the whole lines in the contract. Is in the amount of three fourteen twenty. Your call out was reduced based on his negotiation, continuing negotiation with his lender. I choose continuing negotiation with his lender, so that came out being a little bit less than what was discussed during the time that the council made you. Also, highlighted there is the cost of the fence, and all that the council acquired that as a condition of the additional use permit after the approval of the fire station commitment. So that is an extra cost in the budget, and that fence will go down the side of the fire department between Southern Shore and. So total fire department costs this year is sixty-nine, nine thirty-four. And this time, as a condition of the contract that you and our department are into, Chief Limpacher, please, is going to go through his annual budget and submit to you for this year.
Morning, Councilor. So what you're looking at is the town of Southern Shore's appropriation for the fire department. We also have a revenue stream that would include Dare County as well, from Martin's Point. Our annual budget for nineteen twenty this year is seven twenty-nine, five eight five. So it is a little bit more, and that helps the money from Dare County, from Martin's Point, actually helps to defray our operating costs for both parties involved because it's cheaper provided for both people, so. I'll just go through some brief things. I'm not asking for any more appropriations from the county or Southern Shore's. As I stated, when we all talked about the building, I felt that that was a huge step in your, Greece is just to approve the building. And I felt that we needed to suck it up, at least for this year, for operating costs. Once again, the operating costs in the building are two separate entities, so. As I said, the operating costs, just moving things around in pots, we have many accounts, but the big thing was just trying to maintain the five fourteen, or the seven twenty-nine. So the big outlier for me was the utility cost, because I obviously don't know what the new building is going to bring. It's considerably larger, has three different HVAC systems, things like that. I did some analysis on it and some research. It could be a wash because it'll be so much more efficient, the old equipment was just nearly broken, there was virtually no insulation in the building, so that was the big outlier for me. So just trying to move some pots around, and I kept it at that amount. So I, I'm sorry, I forget that this is my first time here, so. I'm used to talking to my council and my Dare County people, but all this is, is five oh one, and it's broken up all through the twenty-four pages, but this is your total cost. So the five oh ones are just operating expenses, as you can see, the utilities, that was probably my biggest thing. People costs, that's our salaries, that's what we call low SAP, which is our length of service award program for the volunteers. For those of you don't know, that's a forty-five thousand dollar fee, expense a year, that's given to each member if they make a certain number of calls. There's a whole list of things they have to do to meet the criteria. That forty-five thousand is split up between all the members that make it, so it could be fifteen members, in which case, everybody would get three thousand. It could be ten, which everybody still only gets three thousand, because that's the cap per year, three thousand, so the rest would stay in the general operating budget. If it gets to twenty people, then they would get less, it's just forty-five thousand broken up, bucks whoever is it, that's the people cost. Community is just. Or reach, reaching out to the community, fire presentation, signs, the blue signs we make, open house, things like that. Five oh five is the legal, accounting, insurances, little bit of an increase in the insurances, but again, I told you I would not ask for any more money, so I didn't. I just was able to move some things around, and hopefully we'll make it this year. Five oh five was, or five oh six is bank fees and service charges, pretty, I mean, obviously, the big thing in there is we use a credit card system for the square. On the Apple computer for our credit card purchases, for the signs, and also for T-shirt sales and things like that. The rental, for those of you might be guessing about that, that is a system that was put in place to protect the company, the department, and that is a forty-four thousand dollar rental of the stations. For those of you that know, Fire Service Real Estate actually owns our property. That's just a protection put in place by the old chief, but I actually agree with it. It's a protection put in place for if one of our guys would make a bad decision, so they can't come in and take everything, it's a legal thing, that's why we do it. So realistically, that just gets donated back to the department, we usually keep a couple thousand dollars for legal or whatever in that, in that thing, that account. Maintenance, always a big outlier. There's nothing I can do there. We upped that last year, and we probably could have upped it this year, but I told you I'd hold true, and I did. It's actually up to twenty-two thousand now, and it's just whatever breaks on the trucks, I mean, they have to run, so unfortunately, there's not a whole lot I can do with that. Pages and radios, repairing them, pretty simple explanatory. Five thirteen, buildings. Sheen, can you flip through five thirteen, do you have that on there, individual? Oh, okay. Five thirteen, the buildings is just equipment, stuff we would put in the buildings, maintenance, things like that. That's obviously well less this year because we don't have a building, so. We don't typically do the maintenance on each station, the county handles that, so. Our five fifty account, that's any capital improvements, and we use anything over five hundred dollars to capitalize there, so. The last account would be our five seventy, and that's debt service, so that's the new command vehicle, that's the S C B A's, ladder truck. Radios, pagers. I would tell you that myself and the chief both will be facing a radio issue that possibly could be coming up, and we're trying to prepare for it. So I know the chief's been buying radios as he goes, and we're also going to be needing to prepare for that also. Currently, I buy three a year, but we have six on each vehicle, we have two in each utility, there's a lot of radios, so. That's stuff that could be coming up in the foreseeable future, so. Like I said, I didn't ask for any more money this year, so I didn't bump up any of those numbers because I told you that I wouldn't, so. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions? What's the fence going to look like, wood fence?
No, it's gonna, as far as I know right now, it's gonna be the same type of vinyl fence that will match in back by the road departments.
Pretty trite issue, I know, just to.
Oh, yeah, but you know, every little detail, it's keeping track of everything, so, yep.
Council, the next department, ocean rescue, page twenty-five. See, that's the contract, it's the same amount. And that will end the general fund operating budget. And page twenty-six, we got our second town maintenance fund, on the government accounting, cemetery, if I may recall. Just to go throughout the year on page twenty-six, there's a rejection of randomly wholesale cemetery lots. And rejection of expenses this year for the Christmas wreaths across America, as well as the software license that we have to maintain for the map of the cemetery. Val's in that budget, one thousand two hundred and forty dollars. The cemetery fund has a balance, has a June thirty of last year, and it now hits five thousand, about twenty-three dollars. Next fund, town maintenance for government accounting, is on page twenty-seven, capital reserve fund. The only activity projecting this year is to transfer again from the general fund, twenty thousand dollars. For the canal, the accumulation of canal monies for the maintaining canals of town, which we do need every year. That's twenty thousand dollars in, twenty thousand dollars protected expense. At the bottom left, we see the balance of the capital reserve fund is a hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars. Seventy-eight thousand of that is earmarked for canals, for open canals, leave the balance of eighty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars, any other capital projects in this. So that gives the summary of the. Draft proposed slash recommended budget that we'll prepare for you on May. And I will try and answer any questions you'd like to formulate, and I do understand the neighbors is hiding the general feedbacks, they have actual items, they make changes, I'll be answering questions.
I'd like to make a motion that the town manager, who is lying to, in this budget, for the construction of the walkway from the intersection on the south, please call the south one, he might come to the center.
Do you want to pull off on that motion, can you get to the item six? We got a public comment. Right, when we go.
I got confused.
No, I thought, right, did you do it after item five?
I thought the public comment was going to come after.
You did? I know, I think I. Fred, I think you did it after item five.
I said after item five.
Yeah, so this is a public comment.
Well, this is question. Tom, is this not a question, comment section, like we're still on, you know, we're still on Peter's presentation?
No, I probably just.
We did a little motion.
Mayor.
So where is the motion that you can.
What is currently number six, where is that, Peter, are we going to change it now?
Where's what?
What was given to us in our practice as item number six?
We're not there yet.
Okay.
He asked a question.
He did on number five.
He's gonna say, so let's, careful.
Now, where does the public comment come?
After this.
Yeah, you're gonna go on that, that's on word.
Then we'll go to six.
No, I didn't sit that hard, I just said simply after item five. It becomes item six and then the next one becomes item seven.
Well, I was just got confused with the changes in the discussion, I don't know what to say.
That's right. We should go on five to discuss, so if you wanna talk to him about something in the budget now, I'm not mistaken, this, this would be town, not make a motion, but to the top of that.
Okay.
I have a question for, for my, uh, for these discussions, our partners, asking about recycling. Of course, uh, how much part of the city will maintain that, or will be that? And it's hard to share, but the most important is I can share my thoughts for some submissions tonight. So, here, here, uh, we pay an annual fee for recycling, basically, and, uh, and we actually have about forty percent of our population that uses that service. So we're paying a hundred percent to use it and forty percent are using it. At least one of the towns over that provides recycling services on, on current cost per use. Uh, the user's right to, and they kind of, they do recycling, you pay the county, the town, forty dollars for it, or a hundred dollars for it, you pay. Pay the benefit, sorry, the benefit. But we should consider that as a particular being, not, we, we go back to the future, because it's, it's, so. Not in, uh, money making for the town, it's really cost of this service or not, but, so, just wanted to ask a little thing about that, and see if we-
Tom. My understanding is those guys are dumping this as garbage now and not recycling, because of the cost of recycling. I don't know that to be factual, but I've been told that the recycle company that we're using and the others are just taking that to the landfill. So, we're not, truly, we're not recycling. We're just dumping a second garbage every week and I don't-
We're recycling, they aren't.
Right, we're recycling, they're dumping.
Is that, is that your understanding?
Our understanding is the cost of recycling is so low, we're, we're disposable, we're disposable.
The only thing that's advantageous about that is we're not paying the punishment to go to the landfill.
Right.
So, we, if we do decide to not do curbside recycling, then we would have to, you know, absorb some cost of the landfill.
There's not really options, do the town have any options for having like a designated recycle center? We can't, we couldn't do it on a scale of city parks, but.
We don't have a service that we, uh, can, can, can we require that contracts that recycling be recycled? That's not right, can't, uh-
Well, that's, I, I've said, that's what I've been told, I'm not, I can't fact you about that.
So that, that raises probably one of the, it's not even a touch of logic, it's, it's basically, we have a recycle business, we still have a toilet, it's not-
I think this is kinda tying into some national issues on recycling. I don't mean political, I mean market issues, dealing with recyclers. And I know that quite a few people, as much as I hate to see it, they use those recycle cans for trash cans. And, you know, I, I don't doubt whether they're saying it's true.
Just one of hers.
And I, I've heard that too.
Yeah, I've heard it, well, it ties into a bigger issue here.
Yeah, I mean, China's not taking the single source recycling that we're, we're used to. And that, and doing the train board, so that, they're not willing to, to go through and pick through all that garbage. Part of that's doing, like, single source, everything's to lump together versus other countries have it in a little specific, you know, items.
Bonnie made a good point, we're not paying tonnage for that. So, those, if we change it and drop it and just add it, then those are gonna become garbage cans and then we're gonna pay more tonnage. Because I know we pick up a lot for recycling. In my neighborhood, I know we do.
Yeah, and it might get recycled, it doesn't mean it doesn't.
It might, it might.
And maybe they go through and get the aluminum or whatever.
I mean, I think it would be a savings, but I didn't want you to look and say, oh, it'll be a hundred fifty-six thousand dollar savings because we will have to absorb some of the cost of the landfill.
Okay, thank you.
Where's you on five? And I, I got some questions or comments.
If anybody else has, go ahead and, 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 um...
When I look at this, one of the things I don't see in here is not ground or buildings and we just have a review done. Uh, they've stated that we have buildings that are not up to code. And I would hope that we would add some monies in here to bring, at least bring our buildings up code and repair those major items that need to be repaired. Um, and then we're jumping down, we're not, um, which would bring it to the increasing of our capital outlay. Uh, I look at that, we're spending less on capital outlay than we are a lot of other services. In fact, most towns' capital outlay is probably one of their largest expenses. So I would like to see us increase our capital outlay so we can get our roads and our building projects done. And not continuously stay behind. We have, when we do a report like this, then they come back to us, we need to tear all this down and build brand new buildings. So, I think that's sort of the path we should go. The other thing, and I agree with Jim, I don't know which, but I think we should add a path in here for Southwood. Uh, maybe connect in where we stop, go up to the bridge for this year and see if we can go from there. I did like what Ann said about recording the board adjustments, that is a legal, uh, setting, it's almost judicial. And to have that on recording, I think that might be important, of course, as we go forward. It's kind of a serious matter when they have to do those things. And it seems like they're getting, you were having more of those this year or last year than we've had in the past. Also, I'd like to say some no left term limits in there. We talked about that last year, we tried it one time. Question on whether it worked or not, I'm not necessarily saying that needs to be handled completely by our police department. But we need to continue to look at that. And I think that's all, but. I'd like to comment on one or two things Gary just mentioned. In other words, uh, I, I would kinda like to see the planning board and those meetings recorded at some point. And I don't know, are they, are you recorded now?
I'm looking for audio, um, maybe in two minutes.
So you are doing it?
Recording audio.
Okay, well, I can ask, that's fine, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I think that's fine, but my, I, I did not know that, you know.
I didn't either.
But I do think that they ought to be recorded in some type of, that works, 'cause you can go back to the tape.
I don't, I didn't necessarily mean video either.
Yes, we use old canals and, uh, sure, Senator. This is my, my second bull adjustment. We take, utilizing legal money, legal funds, we pay for, 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 in those cases, we pay for the upstairs. So we had a court board, we transferred one of the banking, we used for the legal classes. So that is an expensive tool, the typical cost.
So that's covered.
Good.
As far as the buildings go, I don't know what we would budget, but I think we do, just to determine, if we're going to proceed forward on that. Code issues, I, you know, I sat through the meeting, but I'm not really sure which the code issues were that they were talking about. How much did it cost, uh?
She had them working out.
Yeah, but, yeah. But that may just be one of those planning things we need to get up and on so that we can figure out what to, what to do. They may have already started, I don't know.
There's nothing in this present, presented budget, no, there's no funding.
No, there's not. Where, what would we budget for? Do we have anything specific that, um, code issues?
Maybe that's something we could ask Peter to look at.
What would be the major priorities?
Let him say it, let him know the set of priorities, whether it be major money-
Now, it might be something we need to discuss as to whether you wanna tear it down and build a new one.
That's a one discussion item for me.
Well, I'm sure the chief would love that, if we put something around and give him a new police station that's up code and secure. Uh, I've heard that when she was making her report, that there were areas that needed to be secured and ergonomic and those kinds of things, so.
Let me ask you this, uh, I've been hearing several things, uh, to be proposed or considered. Where's money from? I mean, we can ask Peter to put it in his budget, but, I mean, governors, I don't see that.
That's a good point, Fred. That's where, that's where we wish to first discuss that.
Do we cut our spending? I mean, we could ask Peter, what would be five percent cutting, administrative costs, public works, or whatever, that, that, uh, impact services severely or relays taxes? What do we do? I mean, all these things are nice to have, but it's gonna cost us money, somebody. And we gotta be for our times, for us most unfortunate.
Can I ask Peter a question, to add up, to add up to what you said? Peter, in this budget, how much are taxes going to, maybe, at least, uh? That's what I thought, I just wanted to, and then, and included in this budget is the cost of the finance station, uh, financing.
Yes.
So there's, so we are drawing the three hundred plus change cost of that debt fund itself.
Of course, you got-
Without tax, without increasing taxes at this point, but to friends, but with work.
But you got another big ticket item coming up, I don't know if it's gonna be considered or not, I think it is, and that's, uh, this beach nourishment thing. With the town, I mean, that's, that's-
I think that, that beach nourishment thing happened, well, it's gonna have to pay for itself and be self-sustaining.
We have, how can you do that?
You still got, that means funds, that means the service districts.
Still gotta raise the money, and that's it.
Yes.
And that's a tax anyway.
Yeah, that means, that means the service districts or something to that effect.
It's not even that.
We did service districts last time for Pelican Watch, but we still had to pick up a lot of the tech. And it wasn't, it wasn't a watch, by any means.
Well, and just like you just said about the fire department, we picked up the fire department within the budget without raising anything. And that's really, truly, that's, if you go about one cent equals a hundred and thirty, that's like two point five cent increase that we just absorbed into. We did, and, I mean, you know, it's might be a time to say we need to add on a fire tax or something of that sort to cover that. And that gives us that monies back to, uh, do with capital projects such as, when you said beach nourishment. The other thing was, what was the estimate, Peter, on the, on the buildings overall?
Overall, we have seventy-five thousand dollars, or the options, or the options that we can do. We'll say, I mean, code efficiency part, one of the first options was twelve to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
And that'll give us the money to do code deficiencies immediately if we did something of that sort, just thinking. Do we have two hundred and twenty thousand dollars up? Can you get two hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of here?
The, this council approves that kind of expenditure, uh, directs me to do that, if we put that into the many companies, what's projected out of that?
Is there any way to cut, like Fred said, something about, can you cut five percent off this budget?
Not without affecting some decisions, it's not a big council, okay, my recommendation would be, affecting, can't a town service say that?
What we, then it doesn't get a point, now, it's whether we stretch it or not, or if we have, or if we don't have. But I know it's a moving number, but just give me a, like, just a-
By county standards, you require to have, oh eight, Senate operated budget, for three months, of operating money. By town policy, you require to have one million, seven hundred and five thousand dollars.
One hundred?
Seven hundred and fifty.
So, one hundred and seven hundred and fifty, one million, seven hundred and fifty.
Do you have, is that in here, Bonnie?
No.
Fund balance?
The Senate said you're all.
Why, why is the, they're, they're, no, there's nothing-
Not your vote, it's not your vote. So, then you have a management recommendation, three million dollars.
So we need to have one point seven, the management recommendation is three, and how much do we have?
And your, and your, uh, fund balance has a June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, four million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
So we have one point seven beyond the three million, I can-
That's your June thirtieth, the last year.
And I know it's a big thing, you might want to be that exactly.
Like you all see, uh, the year's ID Act works with the all the community of that, and there's a big fund balance.
What was it, four million?
Four million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven.
We've got one point, roughly one point seven million dollars more than we have, more than we're required to maintain, or Peter feels comfortable, in a management perspective.
And your, 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 your recommendations almost double what the county requires. I'm sorry. Your recommendation, three millions, almost double what the county is requiring.
Now, what, the, the eight percent, any spot on that is what the local government commission requires for us as a minimum, which is equivalent to one month's worth of operating expense.
One month or three?
Three, three months.
No, three months, yes.
So we're, we're, we're almost double that at the three million platform, your, your recommendations, you know, cut ourselves close.
This is a resort, personally, and that's why my recommendation, based on, any recommendations, energy C, or anything else, is I would be the one you can just add before, before hurricane recovery. So that's why I always have them, uh, to, uh, uh.
Cause if you remember, it took us, uh, over two years to get hurricane access, running back from FEMA, so we had to float that money. So that's why we feel that way.
Not one hurricane, it, it, it was another one two weeks later.
So, so you have, you have essentially one point three of play, you covered a few money in your recommendation. I mean, right now, we have another one point seven beyond that, even in there.
That's, that's what you're saying, man, if you want, if you wanna recommend something that we do, we'd like to take on, or this, whatever it is. There's no money except that the fund balance pulls those dollars off. If you have something you wanna do, a walking trail on South Longwood, or you wanna try to do something with, uh, whatever other project we do, this is building. The building, I'll give you two hundred and say, two hundred and thousand dollars in directing, code to be fixed. Anything we want, Stan, it's not already, you know, your markets are cut out, other than, other than, you have a product.
I understand, yeah.
We have one point seven million dollars, we can, we can take on, if that doesn't-
At least, yes.
That's all, that's one point seven.
Well, I think that, I've already jumped the gun here by making that motion out, you know, at, in part of time. But I think that walkway, it goes back to the founding of our town. Walkways are mentioned in the original town charter.
Let's, excuse me, let's go back, let's step back, one step.
Okay.
We've got, we're still discussing these different individual items.
Yes, and Councilman McDonald brought up some potential funding things, and so I'll just reiterate-
We have a public comment session here, come to do it before we get to the part of actually making motions to, to, to do something about themselves.
Have we, have we all asked Peter the questions, could Peter do it, or else you're gonna present it in front of you?
Yeah, probably, it's wrong.
Do you have outsourced use of two trucks?
Would that be more economical?
Well, like me, we're gonna use enough to probably make, have to certify somebody's power, so, because, so, we're pretty confident that outsourced use of two trucks is important.
Does Duck use theirs for mapping on the beach?
I don't think so, I think the coastal engineer, this is his, but, they may check the beach, the ditch was that, I don't know.
Okay, I'm just wondering if-
And they may send the video to their-
What would drone technology, being able to generate land surveys, geo, you know, all this stuff would help us in a- would help us in the long term.
Well, they have companies that...
They have companies that do it, but if the town had a drone, we could make some promotional videos and document, but it's just, I, I'm not proposing that.
No, Bob's saying there's companies, like if you're talking about to do the beach analysis, that do that using drones instead of doing the managed.
Let me add this. Tell them, uh, Sweden, uh, where I'm at TV is, certainly be glad to provide money sources to us with their students, so, I mean, no cost. So if you wanted to do a promotional video or something like that, go out to there.
We, we, we have several sources that has to be there.
That's a free source.
We've, uh, we use the measures, uh, you know, for, uh, ocean rescue uses for, you know.
Yes. That's where, I ran into.
We use, that's where, uh, we use that, that for, uh, maybe summertime. And of course, we use it for tracking instances and so on.
And for the special event, I'm reporting, I'm reporting by, by... And you put a comment in.
It wasn't a second shoot.
No, it was a second sign of shooting.
Just ask them. Ask everybody about Tom. That brings, that brings us up to, uh...
If you want to comment, but you can cheat because you invented the agenda.
Maybe you can cheat. That's fine.
There's somebody's commenting after, makes such a big deal.
Oh, my. Don't even know where to start. Good, good morning again. Ann Schurzma, sixty-nine Hickory Trail. First of all, if I understand things correctly, we're not recycling in this town. Is that correct? If that is true, that is so appalling, I can't believe it. Why are we dealing with this bay disposal company if we are not recycling?
He's not the only one.
Well, I don't care. I meticulously recycle every week, as I know many people in this neighborhood, this town do. What you're speaking of, Mr. Connors, about putting trash in the recycling can, that's mostly the visitors, the vacationers who do that. And maybe, maybe uninformed year-round residents. But the people I know where I live, we're all very meticulous about our recycling and our trash. And if it's not actually being recycled, I'm appalled that this company has not been fired. Get writ, why are we dealing with them, Mr. Rasko, if they're not recycling for us?
We never said we weren't recycling. I never said that.
Somebody did, and if, and if...
If we're on the contract with the recycling company, I said I cannot control that if we were to cross the land, if we recycle.
Well, then we need to control it, because it's, it's fraudulent if we're not recycling.
Nobody said we weren't recycling.
All right. And as far as what Mr. McDonald said, pick up the phone, please, and find out what the facts are. Instead of relying on rumors, things that you've heard. I mean, please, you're our town council, you're representing us. Just pick up the phone and find out what's happening. Because I'm appalled if this is the case. I also have issues with other items here. I'm not sure I should address them because you have so much on your plate right now. But I did want to mention, in terms of revenue, um, I actually like Mr. Newberry's idea about trimming some of these costs. And I would love to see a motion by somebody to one percent, two percent of a budget for the administration and for public works. See if, you know, something can be trimmed. There's also an issue, now you can't do it immediately, but occupancy taxes may not be in total collected in this town because people are renting their homes off the grid, so to speak. They're renting through Craigslist. They're renting, if Airbnb will pay, will collect occupancy taxes. Other rentals that owners are in charge of exclusively, that don't go through agents and don't go through brokers, they sometimes are under the radar and you are not getting your fair share of occupancy taxes. Which is why Mags had recently set up its registration program for all rental properties that are managed by owners. Something to think about. Thank you.
Maybe, Mr. Mayor, may I address the Schurzmas' last comment about the, the monitoring of, uh, tenant owner rentals? This is, this is definitely on the rear screen for the tax collectors of Derek County.
Yes.
And I can tell you that they are vigorously following this, and this is, and this is coming from the rental companies. The rental companies are all... No, the companies want to know how many people are renting on their own. Airbnb submits it, um, there's a couple of the companies that, um, and that's Airbnb's automatic, so that one's easy to, to deal with. But you have, you know, VR, VRBO and some of these other ones. So what they're doing, the tax department's doing, is monitor these websites. And if they find Craigslist being one, VRBO being the other, and if they find that owners are, not just the Southern Shores, renting it kind of off the grid, as you're describing, they are sending a notice that this is going on and this has to, you have to then submit those taxes. And so they're monitoring all of this because they want to get those occupancy taxes. That's what ends up kind of helping come to us, is what, from Derek County. So, yes, and it is actively being watched. It, it might not be something timely, but I can count it on, yes.
Well, and let me also reiterate how the occupancy tax works. We, the town of Southern Shores, get occupancy tax from people that rent from all the way down to Buckston to, um, Duck, whatever. It's not just in our town, it's according to what our levy is and what our portion of the high is, so that's the shared revenue. So it's not just rentals in the town of Southern Shores, it's in all of Derek County. So I want to make sure that that's understood as well.
But it's being, it's being monitored. They, they, they're very...
Counselor, I just went last time and made you view, I've been out in the south. Our first flag that we will notice, uh, is when our recycling company comes to us and says we've got to raise the rates. And that will be the flag. Mags has already experienced it, we've been refusing to take the last items and that's a flag. So they're not going to simply haul stuff out of here, pay landfill, tenant fees, garbage rates, and break even. So what they will do is try to prove the rates, the rates for us to equal this garbage. So I'm confident that they're being used to recycling, so once they're hauling out of here to town. Whether they're making any money or not, I have no idea, based on the worldwide reports, but it seems like they could be at this point. But we were starting to notice that when they come to us and say we've got to raise your rate. And that's my flag.
There was a little public comment, person out. Talked about the public comments, Peter. Joseph, give you a question, answer that a part of it.
I guess, um, I did for, you do have a, uh, agreement with that different form. The one question about the transfer is, we have, if you asked your question, but the open market question.
Uh, just want to make sure everybody understands, town social has another grant. Southern Shores voluntary fire. That's a, that's a private part. Let's do that. That's the thing, people, this is what I'm saying, it's a hard part of building a city that's there. The owners there are, they're all for service that much. Any formal action the council directs, division, deletion, or modification of any projected expense, kind of provision of revenue to the town manager board this time.
Do I have to say that long sentence again?
You do.
I would like to make a motion that the town manager include in his proposed budget and line item for construction of a walkway from the intersection of north, south, east Dogwood, south, all the way to the cemetery.
I'll, I'll second that, and I have two comments.
You have a second motion, a second counsel, is there any further discussion for this, or?
Yes, uh, Mr. Rasko, could you make sure that, I know you haven't been doing this yet, could you, uh, submit a grant to tourism? To, to receive some funds last time?
If the council approves that, it's a light line item, we will, uh, apply for grant with the business. Just a couple of things about that. I have no idea what they will approve. It will be up in the air, it's their decisions discretionary. There is a protocol that y'all have called the last time. It's whatever they decide based on who has this plan. Based on the grant schedule, to get reimbursed, it will not be, and it's supposed to be. So if you show it in expense, it will not be a harsh amount of revenue, and it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be, it'll be the next one. So we realize that we have to make decisions.
That's fine. But it's, it's, I mean, and they may say no, but it, they, they're a little bit, we should try to take advantage.
Absolutely. We're sorry, we're glad of the construction cost.
Construction, and we are hard to sign up there, and the engineering costs that are involved, that require them to do site visits during the construction. But any pre-construction, that's not eligible.
Do we even have a rough idea of what your budget, I'm not sure.
Yes, I do. Uh, counsel, this was in minutes, personally doing the website for your CIP committee a couple of months ago. But the engineering cost estimate came in two pieces. It's actually on that whiteboard, I need to turn it over. But it's the south, the intersection of the Dogwood Trails to Fairway Drive for a five foot wide concrete walkway, just like East Dogwood. As estimated for three hundred and thirty-two thousand, seventy-two fifty-six. Continuing on from that point, from Fairway Drive to Cemetery for a five foot wide, uh, concrete would be six hundred and twenty thousand, one nineteen eighty-one. So basically, it would be slightly less than the dollars for total. I do want to remind you, we had discussions before, I believe, one council meeting, how if this ever came up to, or maybe this was it. See how we can, I'm sorry. If this came up, it would also recommend that, uh, the two walkways be established on East Dogwood as part of this project. Like, uh, Uproar Trail or another, another location, uh, similar to what's there. So that would bring it up to, to just about a million dollars if you add those in.
Think about the end, that would cost total.
Okay. To get to the path, but, I mean, this time, so that those can...
Yes, right. So roughly adopted the, uh, project, but can't... I'm not sure if it happened in the most, uh, twelve month period of project, but that's what it costs. That's an engineer asking money.
Do, now, the, but I want to be clear, this is another, we had some discussions, I believe, this last one, we moved before. But this path is a little related to building the road.
Or not the route.
We're not widening it, we're not doing anything with the road, this is just a path, is that, is that...
Yes, I'm trying to engineer that question, but say I do committee, those three meetings, it's supposed to discuss. And it can be put down without affecting the route, not having to touch it. Two caveats, just to make sure everyone understands. It's once we go south of, uh, Fairway Drive, the topography of those yards, for about a three block section, will change drastically, it will cost a million dollars. So that, and then, of course, there will be, um, the first segment I mentioned, he projected wood off trees being removed, causing pain. And on the second segment, certain trees, that's a, a lot, lot of testing. But that was what was highlighted by the town engineer, so that we can have discussions about it.
And I guess, and the final comment I have is, we just, unfortunately, last week we discussed the family, Kitty Hawk, that, that walking. And, and, and folks were killed, it was a horrific accident, the family. I guess, when I spoke, this, this does represent public safety. And, um, you know, we, I just feel like we have to, we have to do something here. That is, that is so narrow, uh, I mean, it's safe to touch the road, but you've got to make people, uh, dogs and animals and kids places to walk safely. A lot of us, particularly, have that, enjoy how, uh, East Dogwood has it, they're, they're liking it, and you've got, you've actually received positive comments, if you can read it on that. And so, um, I think taking it to the school, or taking it to the, basically connecting the school to the...
You have one doubt, too.
Well, it ends up the cemetery, and then sort of connecting that, that loop is, I don't know, I think it's pretty good.
Yeah, but from Fairway, uh, to the cemetery, it's going to be a pretty significant impact.
Correct.
We're going to have to have a public hearing, you get the public's comments, so, because I agree with what Peter said. I think the word right away is that some of those properties, and there's one in particular, even between, uh, East Dogwood and, uh, Fairway. I mean, the guy walks off his front steps, he's in a lot of...
I might add to that, right, uh, Councilman Newberry, the public. The second segment from Fairway Drive to Cemetery, that's that, is being finalized, and that will be a town engineer requesting it anyway. If the council were to adopt this as a, uh, budget expense project, um, I would, I would insist, basically, that the town engineer come back with the plans to you at an opportune time, after everybody in that, strictly in that segment, each, each side of the road, and notified by either. We've had a tough time, as you know, getting people interested in coming forward to get public comment on certain matters. We actually had a great meeting sometimes, they called me in, said, please come in. In that situation, I think it's imperative to have at least be sat people here. And the idea, I'm thinking, to take the plans to their house, because they're in the yards and they're changing the rest of the town. So I think if you were to adopt this as a project, it may be to have it finished, publish the plans, have another public comment section. Both you and what you want to be, from council, with those plans. Not only have some meetings with the town engineer, many inside, but obviously having come to the council, so you can hear what's going to happen with that subplans from that person. And then, formally through the plans, through the, uh, I think that's only if you're not... You got to, because their people won't be excited and won't know what's happening in the first thirty days. Then there's some people that see the thirty days and they're concerned, and they want to call them to the board and to show it.
Well, I'd like to make a comment, hold it in, while the, the council may have mentioned it, assistant. Yes, we got, I constantly receive positive comments about that walkway on East Dogwood. And also, I agree with you on, to me, this is a public health, safety, welfare issue. It's, I won't go through all the stories about that, but I'm not for having another public hearing. We're going to have a public hearing as part of the budget review process, so then people can check to it at that point. I just think this needs to get done. As I started to say a moment ago, going back to our town charter, walkway dimension. The civic association, the town, and the, uh, Chickahaw property owners association have done, have been doing the walkways for a long time. This is a critical one that would lay countless neighborhoods and streets in our town so that people can get all the way to the school. You know, I, I think it's a joke when that program out there says, put all the signs out there, walking, uh, bike to school, on one of the most dangerous roads we have on the auto banks.
Well, in particular, we're talking about, um, check-in leaks and, and the ability to maneuver on check-in days.
Yes.
And now you can safely get on, walk, you know, you can drive down the hard path.
I could wax on and on about the, what I, uh, think is a need for this. And it's also, I think, a very good, long-lasting commitment to the town, something that people will enjoy for generations.
So, well, I think I'd make an interesting, I mean, what Fred had mentioned, not to do with red nature, but you were just telling us it's really critical. You've got, you've got a lot of problems, the forty, thirty, twenty, thirty, thirty lot properties that are here going to be impacted. What do they, do they know of yet? And I think if you don't get them involved early on, and say, here's what we are planning to do, reject it, do, but do you think it's your problem? You're going to do that one, I think, and it's what they, Fairway not to like that, that's starting.
Well, I think that if the council makes a decision to proceed with this, to approve that my motion, then we start talking to them immediately, but we're not, we don't, we're trying something weird. We just find it one reason or another to delay.
We originally discussed this as a two-part project. The initial discussion as a, as a phase one was going to be from East Dogwood to Fairway Drive. We're going to build that, see how it works, what the response to it was. And then decide we want to build a second portion after that. Now we're saying we want to do the whole thing in one shot, a budget for the whole thing at one time. How do we got to do it all? We can't, I'm not opposed to it, but I think we have to really be careful what we, what we.
Oh, absolutely, we need to be careful, but, yeah, I'm going to make an example of myself. I live on Duffwood Drive. They wanted to put a, you know, a storm drainage system in, or a swale down the road. I object, my neighbor objects, three or four other object. Do you hold up that entire project for the benefit of the entire street? Or in this case, the entire town over the objections of five or six or whatever number of people? They have a vested stake in that, but they don't own the right of way or street. That's a good argument.
Would you hear?
I have to pay for it. Are you asking, I'm here, well.
Enough to him, I don't think he's already answered that, but just, we're asking him to put a line item in his budget for it.
I know, but are we going to reduce this budget to get there? Or are we going to raise, for example, I said fire tax a while ago, to put that money aside for the fire department? Is that would open up that amount of money for this? So you, it's easy to say, let's, I'm going to, when you finish with this motion, I'm going to put a motion that we bring our buildings up code, and that's going to be more money. So, how do you want to pay for it? Do you want to add to yours a fire tax to free up?
Well, I don't need to answer. I made the motion to have the.
I know, but we have to make that, we have to make that decision of how that money and where that money comes from.
Do that if we, we approve or disapprove his budget?
We keep chopping into the budget.
No, 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 you just already explained to us that we have to have, they didn't have at all, over the vote, we used to recommend it all.
I understand that.
It's going to come from the other end of the fund balance.
But we're going to have.
It's going to come from the, yeah, is that where you want to stop taking money?
That's right.
We have to dictate where the money.
Well, I don't want to take money out of our fund balance because of where we are, and, and that's a very important thing, you never know what's going to happen with us.
We get a threat here.
We get hit like Wilmington did last year with Michael.
That's what we have another three million set aside for.
And that's why I'm saying, I don't like dipping into that 1.7 that we, is, we are over.
Can I, if I can mediate, I mean, so what, Jim, I don't think Gary's saying he's against that.
No.
I, I think what he's saying is that he's asking how it's painful, and that's a very legitimate question. And perhaps he's tying it to a potential fire tax, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
A potential, a potential what tax?
Tax to pay for the fire department.
We're paying a bill that we did, we're taking out of our general budget. We're absorbing that within what we have, which is about three hundred, what, how much a year?
Two hundred and fourteen cents.
I think it's two and a half cents, something, it may be, give or take.
I got you.
So do we want to add that and say, hey, we're just going to have a fire tax to cover that? Then we have that money back in our budget.
To offset that.
To offset that, and I don't think, I agree with you about doing it all the way. I'm thinking we're going to only be able to do a segment this year, and then another segment the next year, and then another segment the next year, because I think this is a, I'm looking at more three, that second segment from Fairway all the way to the cemetery, that might take two years, Jim.
All I know is I got a motion on the floor, it's consecutive, you know, and I'm for just doing the whole thing.
I'm sure.
And I'm just, I made the motion that he include a line item, and he would tell us how it would be funded, or would. He's already answered that, though.
Right now, it shows that they're coming out of all the budget in their cell, it shows the draft, the, the proposed budget. It's coming out of the fund balance, and y'all got a whole lot of months to decide issues that you're talking about, and not the, you know, not the tax increase of two and a half cents to offset some costs, or to do that, that's when you, you know, do it.
Good understanding.
Call the question?
The motion is for the town manager to establish a budget line item to create walk trails from East Dogwood to cemetery, connecting, connecting the southeast to the cemetery trail. All good members.
Can I ask a question real quick? Can we ask Peter, in the process of putting that in the budget, to show it two ways? One, taking it out of the reserve, the other, adding in a fire tax?
I mean.
To show us, show us what we've got.
I'm not against the fire taxes you're proposing, but make that motion right after this, and then we got it.
I'm just wanting to show.
My, my budget, I thought we've got to be balanced, whatever else I have. I could give a side explanation, so if you decide this, or show this, do that.
Yeah, I'd like to see. I got you.
Well, you can have, we can give you a half a question, what then?
Well, I know, Tom.
Give you a direction, and if you want, if you want to have a second direction, just do that.
So my second question to Peter is, can we do this entire pipeline over the next 365 days? We have no way of doing it.
I see, as I said, I, if it's structured, but we would, we'd need a budget for, which we don't know.
So we're talking how much money for the entire?
Maybe the hours for that.
For the.
Any more with the tourism, that's the, even if they were, the treatment, it would come in the next one.
So from?
From intersection to cemetery, this engineer has projected, estimated.
A million total.
Yeah, Hickory and Wood.
So the question is for your call?
This is your call, yes, I guess. I said, we favor, we're up to all the favorite, asking the town manager to budget the line item for that, for that trail, from East Dogwood to cemetery, indicate by saying aye.
I haven't voted yet.
All the favorite, I've got three, like, two, I have votes, all, all of those.
We're tiring one year.
Team for two of those. Questions for names, we, areas, we asked the town manager to budget the line item for that first.
Any suggestions or recommendations, counsel, as to how we consider parts of the budget?
I would make motion that we look at two and a half cent fire tax to add to our budget.
That would tax everybody, would it? Motion to establish.
Do you want to say two and a half, or do you want to say to cover the?
To cover the month, whatever, it'd be two point.
Three hundred and thirty.
I, I don't have the calculation in front of me.
Two and a half cents is three hundred and thirty-one thousand one cent.
So it's five dollars and two and a half.
So you want to take the three fourteen divided by the penny and increase it by that amount, so it's over twenty.
Yes, to cover the debt service of the fire department.
I'll second that.
Thank you, thank you for this. Any discussion, counsel?
I, I think it's a responsible way to do it, if the, well.
Yeah. We're, we're going to start a process here of increasing taxes for everything we do. Do we really want to do that?
Is it necessary to do that?
Yeah, is it necessary? Could we trim our existing budget? I'm, I'm just against raising taxes, period.
I am too.
We all have to pay it.
I am, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Seriously, I didn't mean any of that.
That's okay.
I, I'm like, I agree, I'm hesitant to start going down that road for this right now without having to even discuss this further. We were also looking at a potential MSD district, that's going to be a tax increase. I think just to bring this up at a council meeting for the first time, there's, there's a lot to weigh in, and I agree with what you're, it's saying in principle, raise the tax rate to cover the debt services, is that correct? That's it. Okay, now, I can agree in principle on that, but.
This is a budget workshop, Jim.
Yeah, I'm not.
We're asking you to put it in.
We're asking him to put it in his budget, we still have to approve his budget.
That's correct.
What I'd rather see is a two point five percent decrease in the budget to cover that run of the tax.
I can agree with that, too.
I just, I just don't think this is going to fly very well in the community, from another, from taxing the price.
How much do they have to decide? Two, two point five is an increase in what?
Decrease. A decrease in, in Peter's budget, in other words, what Gary's trying to do is raise about two point five percent of our tax, why not take that out of our budget, cut our budget? We'll have to cut some services. How's anyone going to argue with the fact we've got those services, but the taxes didn't go up?
I don't think we can blame it on not having services as it is constantly. Well, I mean, I could be wrong, I guess. I think, people think they have services that they don't have sometimes on that.
I want to just, I'm just going to fall back on the last nine years. I mean, I've seen a balanced budget brought to us every year since, since Hal Denison was a mayor. The only tax increase we had was for street improvements back in whatever year that was, he was first, I think it was. He managed to present with us, to us, a balanced budget every year, which we were able to live with, which didn't impact having to cut unnecessarily, or cut arbitrarily, which is what we're going to be doing. Real talk, Peter, okay, cut, cut the whole thing by two and a half percent. I don't think that's reasonable. He's, he's been able to pay for it.
Well, I mean, that's up to him, how he wants to cut it. I, I mean, I'm not telling him how to do it, I don't think, sure.
I think asking him to cut two and a half percent out of the budget.
Across the board, I mean, there may be some areas where you can cut, maybe areas where you can't cut. I mean, maybe you have to take another year to repair it, I don't know.
Well, the whole reason we're asking him to do that is to pay for the debt service, to the fire department. But we all knew that was coming.
We're paying for the debt, right.
We, we all knew that, we had that.
I think it's already included.
It is, it's already included.
If my calc, if my calculation's right, and I was just working on that thread, I don't disagree with you. It'd be less than half a percent cut in the budget of six million, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to get that three hundred and fourteen thousand dollar debt service.
Counsel, just in one second, just to make it clear, that we want to live on the edge every year to keep it, for what we care, it would reduce services, and in that case, I'd have to come back to you. You would have to dictate to me what to do, what to cut services, and just go trim the path that's not there. So just want to make sure that you all understand that, I'll come back to you for, and have less there, what you want to cut. If we're going to have two and a half cents.
Counselor McDonald, I think, I would suggest that. He can present us a budget, but when we start talking about raising taxes, I think we need to do that in a greater context, because we don't know yet where we're going with beef re-punishment. We, there may be some other things out there that.
I agree.
If I understand, your job is to present a budget, and then just figure out, and you tell us how the options are for paying for it, is that right?
Again, unless you, if you don't pass this motion, I would show.
Coming out.
Exactly, I would say, I'm big on the money, doesn't fund balance, and you could decide in June, after public hearing, I've changed that. If you pass the motion, it's going to show three someone sent a tax increase, basically, to pay for the fire services, for the debt service and property. It's simple, and you can change it, you don't have to adopt it, you've got six weeks to change that.
I mean, I think that people understand that this new station costs money, it costs a lot of money, and it's, it's critical. We all understood, and we voted for it, that it would come at a cost, and we're unanimous, and, and so, what Gary's saying is a responsible way to cover that cost, and I don't think that people would object to something that was very unanimous across the community.
Thing is, we didn't tell them that when we voted on the fire station. We didn't say, we've got to pay for that tax increase. So I think you're misleading the public when you come later and add tax on.
Well, it need not be, but I think right now is that that's, there's different ways to present it within the budget. There will be an opportunity to comment on the budget, so the question, I guess, for us is, do we want to ask Peter to include it in the budget to have that discussion? Because people will come out, and people will talk to that point, or do we just say, no, we're going to say, we're going to close our eyes to that possibility altogether? And I think that, that's how I agree with Gary's motion, and maybe misreading it, that we just want to have it in there, and it's not the final, this is not the final say, but it will surely spark discussion, and I don't think that's a, a bad thing. And maybe that in the end, we take it out. We could always go to undesignated fund balance and do it, but if we don't look at it, then we're shutting off discussion.
Right now, send the budget, and you're not taking it out of the sum.
Correct.
What, what's in the budget?
For services and debt.
No, not taking that one in.
Well, you're correct, we, we're getting a shoveling bag as we use the regular budget history.
It's already included.
I don't believe it like it is, we don't raise taxes, let's raise them for all this other stuff we're planning on.
Let's, let's go one step further, for you. Right now, we've got, I'm going to do the fund balance, a certain number of dollars. We, we had covered the, the fire station without touching the, not designated fund balance.
Yeah, that's what you just said.
That's in the full regular budget.
Right.
The only place we're talking about touching the fund balance is what we just voted on, is just the, the trail.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make a correction, there is a slight showing of fund balance transfer in this budget. It's been there since he made it, it's caused a couple of things that you did after he did the fire call. I think you can increase the due fees, except, so there is a spot. And then there's a mound in there that shows the transfer.
How much?
This one is on page nine, ninety-five thousand six fourteen on page.
That's all the stuff from the first year.
That's the balance in the number.
Just, well, I guess let's go with the question.
Okay. Oh, I was on the floor, say a second. I got, the mortgage taxes by two point three percent?
Hold on, two point three, something.
Two point three seven.
Here, here's, and I've been saying this for a long time, and we've got fire services that have increased our budget. There's going to be additional costs for that fire department over the next few years, based on needs. We have not, they have a plan, the guy look at replacing engines eventually. We have moving needs, and the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to bring us up code, I think the estimate was somewhere around six million to replace everything. We've got beach nourishment coming, that is going to be discussed over time. The bottom line is, we need a plan for the next, we need something written over what we're going to be doing. The bottom line is, we need a plan for the next, we need something written on what we're going to be doing.
I think you just hit the nail on the head with the sledgehammer. Yes, we need to plan and put all the...
Well, we've been on that for three years now, and I haven't gotten those council plans, but...
Those council plans, do you have any?
Well, actually, it is, and we've not done it. We're talking about it right now. But we're not putting anything down because look at those building, building needs, I mean, you're talking about path, that's great. Throw those building needs, which is my next motion, is to put money in here for repairs for our buildings to bring them up code.
Well, we don't have a plan of action on that. I agree, though, that that needs to be done.
We do have a plan, they just did a survey. They told us what needed to be done.
What we do by, Gary is, I'm kind of wishing you withdraw your motion. I think we need to look at it holistically, we need to look at all of it. That's what the motion ought to include, what's going to be the impact on taxes if we do...
Those issues.
We service fire departments, I think, are recovering, but we got repairs to the building, we got walking trails, we got beach nourishment, on and on and on. We need to make a motion for Peter to do an analysis and come back with estimated costs and what the impact on taxes or what the impact on undesigned fund balances might be. I like to look at it holistically, and as you said, we need a total plan, not piece by piece by piece.
I can withdraw the motion, please.
Does that make sense?
Sure, I can withdraw it, is that okay, Tom? Sure, if you wanted to call the motion, I was going to go ahead and draw it, and talk about the improvements, is that okay?
All right, now, you can know the motion, I'll make motion and we put capital monies in there to repair our buildings and bring them up to code.
And that amount is about 200,000.
Yeah, we have to, but the parts, like, what happened to your motion?
I withdraw it. Gary, you threw the motion about putting cars, establishing projects.
People, just one comment, if I made a motion, it's very important. We can analyze this all day long, and try to stop it for four years. Y'all have to come up with a plan, what you want to do. You know what the, one penny of the tax rate is, 130,000 dollars. That's what it's going to be, that's going to be announced. So, if you adopt this plan to redo the town hall complex, it's going to toss that amount of debt service up the queue. So, I can't just come up with a plan, you know, we've got to do this stuff.
Yeah, but you can come up with a proposed plan, and we can adjust it.
You're going to have to direct me to what you want to do.
Whose proposed plan does he do? Does he do yours, does he do Jim's, does he do Tom's?
No, he doesn't.
Does he have five, one for each of us?
I struggle to bring to y'all what you want planned for. I did that in the planning session this year, I gave you what you wanted to talk about, and I presented to you the area cost options. And there's been no adoption, or even a sit-down, that's why this budget is the way it is. And I can come up with, yep, y'all saw the cost figures.
Can we add this to one of our future council meetings so that we can get that study, get all that information in our council books, and review all that, because that's, I think you just touched on one of my main objections, what exactly are we going to do?
Well, I could ask that question about that path the same way.
Well, I can project it, you're drawing for that though.
I understand, Jim, but I could say to you, you know, what's the cost, why don't they show, we have that in our books too? But we keep kicking the can down the road, is my point.
On what issue? There's a lot of them.
Buildings, roads.
Yes.
Our projects.
Well, roads, we've been plugging away at that for a while.
We're not kicking the can down the road.
Yeah, we are.
We allocated more separate projects for roads, and it's been held up pretty steadily.
And frankly, we can even, and here's the other thing, Peter need, it's up to Peter, but he need not use all the undesigned fund balance for the path. He has $700,000, which are roads and paths, which were retitled a year or two ago, so he can take some money from that. There could be the potential for some tourist board money that comes back next year, so that will be seen as windfall. So, it need not all come from that, and to Gary's point, if he should make a motion on bringing the town hall up to code, once again, it can come from that $700,000, that's capital.
That's what Peter told us earlier.
So, there's a lot of factors. Now, I understand Gary's point, your breath point about being fiscally conscious and keeping a good amount in the undesigned fund balances. At the same time, you still have these things to do.
We know we allocate $200,000 which is changed to improve, and I don't, we don't have to cover it, we don't have to cover that. To me, that's a line which we should be considering.
I agree.
Above the taxes that reached the department.
It should, oh yeah, it should be in here.
You know, that's our question, make sure we give a motion, if you want to.
Why don't you make the motion?
I did.
Okay, the motion's made.
To put it in.
Okay, to put what in?
To at least bring our buildings up to code.
A specific amount of money, or?
200 and a half.
I'll put in, I would, I would care to get, but I can test the motion and pass it, I'll put in, recommend it.
Okay.
And then, Jim, and Jim, if we want to go back at a later date and look at, instead of upgrading to code, doing one of those other options that she presented us, that's fine.
I can see putting the money in to bring the building up to code, but before we jump off on doing that, I think we should add that as a council and see, what option do we want to do on this report?
I mean, I think part of this is, the hard part is, part of this is this meeting is setting our priorities. This meeting is setting our priorities, we're doing that, we're setting what's important to us.
Yes. I've got a motion to make to ask the town manager to, and allow him to make the necessary improvements to our building and structures here to bring us up to code. And that's around $200,000. I have a second to that motion, in for the discussion of that particular motion. Would you pause? If you go through the discussion, I'll call for the motion, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Motion made to, to ask you to put that on the budget here. Anything else, council, if you want to see put into budget somehow?
Like I said...
Peter, how he gets it in?
Like I said a while ago, we need a total plan of how we're going to address all of these issues. And Peter's saying he can't do it, we have to do it, so what are we going to do?
I'm saying I can do it, you direct what you want, I can show you how much it's going to cost to do it.
That's right.
That's what I'm here to do, that's what I've been here to do for years.
That's like me telling you every little step to make. What I'm saying is, can you come back with what logically makes sense with proposals, something that you have to review, and we can give you comments back on it.
Tell me what you want, tell me what you want finished.
Okay, I'll tell you what I would like.
Counsel, counsel, tell me that.
You're going to do a motion?
It has to be, it has to be the form of a motion, I think.
Okay, I'll do a motion. I like the motion that the town manager provide a proposed plan for the council to consider for all of the projects that have been discussed today, one including beach nourishment, walking path down south of Dogwood Trail from east Dogwood down to the cemetery. What other projects do we have?
Buildings.
Buildings. I think we got service to the...
What about roads, how do you want to, did you want to?
Sorry, roads, did you want roads?
Yes.
Roads are already being included, I guess.
No, but it does...
But it did, with digital funding for long-term, budgeting for road construction or repair, not construction or repair. Are any other items that the town manager sees appropriate that we should be considering?
What do you think, I think we have to direct, what are the other items?
Handways to finance for to pay.
In other words, I'm asking for, this is our job. Okay, well, we need to sit down and do it, then, we don't do it.
That I will agree with, that I will agree with. I think, I think we need to have each of us come back to the next meeting in June or November.
So, we're doing the town manager's job for him. I asked for a proposal, I didn't say it's a final plan, something for us to review so that we can make changes or approve it, delete it, throw it out, vote on it, whatever we want to do.
What, what are we thinking about doing that you don't know about already, as a council member?
I do, I know about all these bits and pieces, but I'd like to see it all brought together in a plan. What would actually be done, what the costs would be, and I would like to see that extended out over several years because we can't do all of this in one year.
And nobody says we're trying to do it all in one year, nobody says that.
But let's have a plan for when we will consider doing it. It doesn't mean it's in stone and we're not going to be able to make changes. I mean, I've never been involved in any kind of business that you didn't have a plan, a plan to carry you out several years. Even in our personal life, we have plans on how we're going to budget and spend our personal money. We as a town have just bits and pieces, I'd like to see it holistic, all run together. I mean, other towns have it, I know Doug, Max did, the county has it, why don't we have it? That's my point, I'm not trying to be so dogmatic, but we don't have it.
We haven't done it, that's why we don't have it. We have, we have a plan that we haven't done, as a council, we have not directed, that we're going to establish a long-range plan which said we'd do it in D.C. and D. It's not, it's our job to do that. Now, we need to sit in a meeting for an extra hour and hash that out and decide what the priorities are, and we haven't done that. We know, we know that it's a probability or a possibility for in three years, perhaps for a beach nourishment project. We know we have people who will help us with that process.
I agree, Tom, I couldn't agree with you more, but we need to put that in a plan where when we come to these meetings, they're in the book, and we don't have to ask Peter all these questions, you know, we already know.
I don't, I mean, I think that some of this is just a math exercise in that, so if you know the beach nourishment, the cost X amount, you divide that by, aren't there many cents? And you go ahead and say, this would be the tax increase, that's what, I mean...
I know, I know what you're saying, and I can do that as well.
Right, right, right.
But it's bits and pieces, I'd like to see a plan. I mean, you know about landscaping, planning with your clients, I'm sure.
Well, they go way beyond landscaping, they, but I agree with what you're saying, we need a plan like that, but we... I don't think it's appropriate to tell the staff to devote a plan, it's up to us to do it now. How do we do that? Do we assign that to a planning board, do we do that ourselves, do we?
I said the staff provides a proposed plan, I didn't say, and we go down it based on whatever changes we need to make. They have all the data, I don't, I have the data, but it's in bits and pieces. That's what I'm trying to ask for, is pull it all together, and then how are we going to get there? Are we going to do it this year, next year, or the following year, and tie it all to budgets? So, when we come and have these budget meetings, we know exactly what we're going to do. Right now, we're up in the air with this, with some pieces.
I don't feel totally up in the air, I feel, I do feel a need to, you know, to address everything in context, but it's got to be a big picture thing. We know beach nourishment is out there, but we don't even know if we're committed to that yet or not.
I didn't say we were.
No, I understand.
You can't make a decision if you don't have all the facts together.
Well, that's what I mean, we've got that, we've got all these ZTA's out there floating around.
We do.
We've got, you know, the fire department, well, we've got all kinds of things that we need to sit down and look at with the big picture.
Yes.
But I don't...
Give me a second. What was the last thing we included, was it the monies or the?
I'm working on some of the motion, I'll have a second.
No, motion gets approved a few minutes ago, about the building.
Beach nourishment, the walking path.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make sure that y'all understand, beach nourishment is nothing else than need to clean to you until you have a financial picture in place. I brought to you a plan, D.D. expert, that everybody uses, and tells you what has to be done, to you to get what Mr. Newberry wants. So, I think what he wants is for the average homeowner to get paid taxes on a senior session, and he provide that until the experts come in here and love that plan, including the NSDs, and you have to decide. Like, that was clear, the South Dogwood Trail, that's going to prove, I mean, that's directly included in there, I'm going to show you, it's going to come out of fund balance and it's going to be in this budget. I don't know what else, you know, the buildings, we brought the experts in here for you, showing you what has, needs to be done, has, could be done, and what needs to be done, I don't know, using that motion for you. I can't sit here and say, a year eight, it's going to cost average homeowner this one down in tax rate, until you decide what y'all want done in the winter. I'm not going to sit here and dream up stuff for this town when y'all have decided to do it, even adopting a plan. I understand it's frustration, this thing going on for a long time.
Does that agree?
It's been going on four years, it's not... I will just repeat that right now, I heard it, and heard it, and heard it for four years, it was not me, I'm sorry this question.
I mean, I think part of it, part of it is, while we want Peter's help, and we need Peter's help on this, I agree. It's not his job to determine where the tax increases may come.
I agree with, I didn't ask for him to do that, I asked him to give a propose, like a...
But how does he propose an analysis?
Analysis.
He can tell...
Scenario.
He can take one cent, equals $130,000, and say, if you do this, it's going to cost you this amount of money.
That's what I was saying, though, that's a...
That's my point, that's, I'd like to see scenarios.
So, are you proposing that he would come up with a list that we would...
Then we develop a plan off of that.
Okay, okay, no, I'm trying to understand, so we would come up, you've come up with some items, all right. So, your proposal would be that then Peter would kind of take it, he can estimate as best he can, some things he don't, he doesn't know the answer to.
I don't expect exactly, he doesn't have them, we don't have them.
Then he would then take that amount and divide it by the cost, the tax increase, potentially, right? Is that what you're asking? And then, we would have a list in front of us with 10 projects and divided by $130,000.
And they come back and say, we can include such and such in our budget, but if we go this step further, we're going to have to increase taxes by X amount.
No, no, but that's the part, he's not, he's not going to tell us when to increase taxes, but he'll tell us what the tax increase will be?
Well, I'm not sure how he can tell us how much we tax... We're not asking him to tell us what a tax increase would be, we're asking him to say, you'll need this amount of revenue to do it. I mean, it's just like yours.
Yes.
You've got a million dollars that you just put in there for pass, it's going to, what he's going to pull out of...
I just think we need to give him concrete direction on what he's...
The amount of revenues that's now, which is what you made this year, that's what long-range personnel are to it, and what the county, what the coastal engineering firms told you that, the architecture firms told you that, and the town engineers told you that. That's the revenue that you're going to have to talk about these projects. And as far as, if you look at here and there, you got to decide when you're going to build one, if you show the blood value.
I mean, the big one is the beach nourishment, truthfully, the other stuff can be a random, but that's the big one.
That's a usual one, and that's why I say, that's got to pay for itself, it'd be self-sustaining, that's where...
But we need to, and there's an individual we've got that would do that analysis and figure out how that breakdown works with the service districts or otherwise, or something. So, that's a choice, we could, if we were interested in that, we could authorize them to go ahead and get started with that study to be able to get the information that you're requesting for. Fred, and there's a cost to that, and there's also a danger in that we're asking them to go ahead and start the study before we've actually approved the project.
I'm not asking for all that. I'm asking for high-level planning documentation that puts all these projects together, or any other, you know, projects that could be out there with the horizon, we have them considered, all into one place, the cost estimates, and what we could do, spread out over several years.
I think that's two.
Well, all I've heard is can't do it, so we're just going to do it.
Can't, I second the motion, Bob.
Okay, let's call it. Let's call the question.
Wait, what was the motion? Have you guys have gone on with this thing to, so much dead time?
You know what, we've gone on with a lot of projects. I mean, think about Coby, right, you said a while ago about ZTA's, that Coby rights been going on for how many years? Four, and it was going to be done my first year in office?
Well, I'm, I'm, let me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I'll do the land and come up with the history of that, so y'all can remember exactly why it was delayed.
That's not, that's not today.
It's not today, I want to make sure y'all understand, that was delayed for a reason. It's not today. I want to make sure y'all understand that was delayed for a reason and I would give land and come up with history.
Not, yeah, we-
Write a summary and send it to us on email.
So what is the motion on the floor?
I mean, the thing is, we, when I said kick the can, Tom said, no, we hadn't kicked the can. Yes, we have. We have added stuff to our budget piecemeal. We have not developed a set plan. Like, we need to plan out at least five years, folks, to say, we need to fix this building before it falls down. Or somebody gets hurt and it ensues us because it's a safety issue and it's not up to code. That goes over really good the side of a courtroom when they file a suit against the town. We built a new fire lab because it was in bad shape. We're going to be doing beach nourishment, I assume, because-
I wouldn't assume that.
Well, maybe not.
We got a plan for it.
We got the plan for it if we're going to do it. We can't wait until the last minute like we did at Pelican Watch and all of a sudden we pulled our money out of our, you know, reserve to pay for it and then put it back and I understand that.
Right now, we're not, we're not on anything except the data so that we can make a decision on that.
I understand. But we need to act on, and I say we, we need to have a plan in place. Of course, you know, I'm going to make a motion in that we put money in this budget for no left turn during the summer months. We need to plan for these things.
We've got a motion on the floor now and-
And I'm explaining that. We need a plan to track how we're going to do these things.
I'm not even sure what the motion on the-
Well, I'll repeat it. I'll repeat it. My motion is I would like for the council to re, the town manager to come up with a proposed, and I emphasize the word proposed, plan for projects such as beach nourishment. Roads. I think we ought to throw no left turn in there or whatever, uh, traffic, uh, reduction we can make. Buildings and any other, uh, oh, uh, walking path, um, South Dogwood Trail. Or any other, uh, I know you're laughing, Peter, but I'm serious.
I'm laughing, Mr. Newberry. I can show you.
But any other projects that we foresee over the next several years. And I would like to tie all of that to the budget. A proposed budget.
So we have a motion. We had a second motion, I think, earlier or giving up?
Yes, we're seconded.
Any further discussion about the transmersion? It's not all in favor of Mr. Newberry's motion. If I say aye, all opposed, the motion's not given.
So you're saying you don't want to plan?
No, I'm saying I don't want to approve your motion. Well, maybe it might be a little bit easier.
Well, can you give us an alternative to that? If you say, you say we're, we're asking for a plan and-
I don't think it's Peter's job to do that. I think it's our job to do that. Yes.
I can be on, I can be on-
We're asking to do the-
Are we asking to get the data together for a proposed?
I'll give you an alternative to that. We sit down as a council in a, in a closed session or an open session and we talk about what we want to do with the budget. I mean, just, anyway, ask him how we're going to pay for it. Some of those asks. And Fred's ideas can be incorporated, Jim's ideas, my ideas, your ideas, things we know we're going to have to do and things we think we're going to have to do. Decide which ones, which ones we want to prioritize and give him that priority. And we haven't done that. We should have appointed the thing of the town manager as our town, as, as a planning force. We're not appointing Peter. I'm saying that's what, that's what it looks like. We're not, we're expecting some-
Well, it looks like to you, Tom, but I'm just trying to, to instill some good business practices on how we operate. And all we're asking the town manager to do is support in doing that. I'm not asking him to make decisions.
Let's give him our, our priorities. We just even things we know.
In a motion.
We've been talking about.
Two, two of those are endless. My job is to propose to you a financial plan. That's what I'm going to write in here based on what y'all tell me that you want in terms of the council text. According to what we need for the South Dogwood Trail.
We want, we do not tell you we want money set aside for improvements to town hall? What else do we have? Have we indicated we want a college? Him to give us money if we couldn't?
Do we want, do, Fred, I mean, to the point, I mean, if we want to get to the, the big cost, which is the beach nourishment, do we want? And would you support having that company look at how to pay for it? This is Jim's thing. Now, we're doing it ahead of actually doing the beach nourishment. We could be throwing this money away. But if we want those answers, do we want to go ahead and add that to the budget?
I'm not asking for exact numbers. I was asking merely for a proposal based on what we know. We know based on the current study that the cost is going to be where? Anywhere from thirteen million to twenty seven million?
So why don't we need him to look that up?
Because, because what, what's critical to this is your, your, your concept of cost neutrality. And who's going to make that cost neutral? Because at some level, it will, it will, it will affect taxes, to your point. And who's going to pay those taxes? Are we looking at everybody paying these taxes? Are we looking at individuals on the water?
You're meaning exactly what I was asking for, but I wanted to pull all these projects together in one plan. So we get it all together so we can make these decisions. So all I was asking-
And we can do that. We can, as a council, we can do that, but these are going to be other.
Why don't we all come up with a list, as you're saying, and then we can, we'll continue this discussion. And we will set the priorities. What's all the other priorities?
I also just don't think that it's up to the town manager to do that, though. I think it's us or if not us specifically, we'd get a committee together for that. But I think burdening the town staff to do something that, that we haven't made decisions on yet, that is just a more than a motion.
I think it also asks them to, to, staff should not have a political role in this, in that, that's inviting-
This isn't politics. This is pure-
No, it is politics because it, because it is clearly politics. No, it is, because if he, if he does this and shows that there's a tax increase, then people are going to go on him and say he's proposing to raise taxes.
To present the facts.
No, no, but, but the facts can be, you can, you could pay for things in different ways as we're finding out.
That's what I'm asking for. How we, what are those different ways? What are the scenarios?
But there's too many, there's too many variables.
See if there's such.
Okay.
No. I'm sorry. I missed it.
Let's, let's come back to this.
We all can do all this.
Make your-
I'm, I'll make a motion that we increase the six hundred and sixty two thousand dollars, three hundred, three, sixty two, four, three, four oh in capital. Increase our capital fund or outlay from six, six, two, three, forty. I'm making a motion. We put, we put in six, six, two, three, forty every year on page thirteen.
Capital improvements.
Capital improvements.
Okay. So you want to increase-
I want to increase that by two cents on the, uh, two hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, what is that? Two sixty? Because if you look at, and that's my motion, if you look at our capital, this is, you know, one of the lowest funds we've got. Everything else is-
But you're, you're proposing to do that in terms of, uh, does your proposal include those taxes, two cents, or are you just fineing the two cents sometimes?
Fine the two cents sometimes. I'm not, I'm not raising the taxes yet. We know where it's coming from. Yeah.
Undesignated funds.
Yeah. This is ongoing, two cents.
This is the second time you've done this?
Yeah, we've never raised-
Should we increase it two cents or?
Yeah, we've never raised a capital and outlay except I want to-
He's not talking about taxes. He's telling us to raise it.
No, no, I'm not talking about taxes. I'm, is this the second?
We did it last year. It was four hundred thousand dollars. So-
Well, we're discussing it. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it. I agree with it.
I mean, we-
Y'all's relation on the, that will be based on current all tax base amount, two hundred and sixty four thousand, nine hundred and sixty five.
Two hundred and sixty, six, sixty two, not two hundred and sixty four.
Two hundred and sixty five.
Two cents. Yeah, that would be-
I'll make it one line if we raise it two. Seven?
Yes, sir.
And that would come out of undesigned fund, that, Tom?
No, that would come out of our joint fund.
That, that's right. I understand. Okay, I get what you're saying.
Well, can you clarify that? Anything that you would not manage is going to show that it would come out undesigned fund amount for the purpose of balancing unless you would not tax increase this up. So if you were to show a flood, it's got to come to the bottom.
I think we're spending enough on capital roads improvements right now. We need to look at these whole big picture stuff, as Fred was saying, before we start shifting money around.
We're putting in discussion on various topics.
Capital, more than roads, Jim. He said it.
I, I, I saw that. I, I would worry about, I don't, if it were just this year, I would move it because I think it would cover, I think it would cover the paths, but, um, I'm, I'm, yeah, long, but I'm, in terms of cover some of the costs, we need to take less from undesigned fund. That's what we're getting at. But, but in this case, I, I can't see moving it up again another year, but perhaps next year, maybe something like that.
Yeah, I'm not on board with that. We just gave that recently.
That was motion on the floor, council team.
We increase every other area within our budget each year. This one we don't increase.
No, we don't increase it by, by thirty percent or twenty five percent.
Well, we haven't increased it over the last two years, however many years prior to the last increase last year. So, I mean, we need to bring it in line with what it amounts to. What we're doing now is partial products on roads. It takes two or three years to do a road.
I, I understand that statement. It takes two, three years to do a road. We have, we have some roads that have taken longer to finish the project because of delays we have no control.
Juniper Trail's done in segments, three years in a row, and we still have a section in the middle that's not been completed in the rebuild. As an example.
Society didn't need to be done. It was rebuilt earlier. It didn't need to be-
Well, the whole road was rebuilt earlier. I'm just saying, and I'm not arguing that point. I'm just saying it took a three-year period to do that road. And, you know, Yopon, how long did it take to do that one? Over two years.
Okay. That wasn't because of dollars. That's because of the fact we didn't, because of camera requirements and, and the issues with the speed itself.
Well, Juniper was caused of dollars. We ran out of money.
We didn't have a dollar to afford that in one year.
That's going to happen. Uh, really, just to-
Yeah, because the price of paving and road construction goes up and we've not accounted for that for a long time. We've just left it as was.
Council, you all have a motion. You all have a motion. So there's a discussion of motion. All in favor of increasing the, uh, capital fund? I say I have any money to do it by, by two, two cents. Uh, indicate if I say aye. All opposed? Motion for out here to do that. You have another motion you want to make here?
Sure. I want to make a motion that we put the no left turn monies in there to, uh, cover that in summertime from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Do you have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Do you have a second to the motion?
David, I want to-
Go ahead.
We need my all-out attempt in terms of the South Dogwood. Is that you?
South Dogwood.
So are we getting names on that?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, let me just go do a number one.
Good.
Talk anytime between dad and June thirty or we're talking about several of those and then at this point, there's budget. And we have to do a lot of things to the budget, so just make sure the budget is done.
Do we have, uh, do you, do you have a guess of a cost program get based on the, of us?
I can, I can give you the, uh, for a change. This would be a gas minimum, right at the end, it's a three, twenty half percent for the bottom unit. Uh, but if we, if we knew just two officers at one fifty eight South Dogwood, uh, I'm going to have to hire an officer. You cannot realize that officer until the following year. By the time you get, get through that something. There's four departments on this route, not that three, four open. They, they, these open, these go almost any of that. It's just not a lot. The bottom line is, even with that, I can't guarantee you that we would have enough officers to cover that area. If you're talking about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars just for the real officer, the equipment, the control, the certification. I understand you wouldn't realize that officer till the following year.
Who would like the other cost of the home?
Over time, uh, three, twenty, then it's roughly about seventeen hundred dollars right now that not only do we have the, the profit and the, 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 so we can save off of it.
And this would only be, this may like turn with the dog, so that all this stuff on seals and charity and all of this stuff.
There's always still wide open.
Still wide open.
Of course, there's some more homes to do.
And then how many, before we, we'd spent about seven thousand, if I'm wrong, to do that test. Is that about right? Is that something like that?
Yeah, something like that.
Something like six or seven. And we had a, I mean, two days, we had a difference of, uh, there was a miniscule amount, right? And it was a hundred and-
It won't be, if you do it every weekend, well, we have to do two of the wards that were here all day for twelve hours inside, eighteen twelve hours in the summer.
Period.
Um, and then we have to make arrangements to rent barrels like that, we want to have a good school, barrels, and keep the courses, and keep the courses.
Well, we didn't see appreciable difference in traffic based on the test.
And, and to be fair, you know, it was a weekend, but I did not say that it was a company's weekend. But I didn't understand. I wouldn't have to do anything to understand. There's, I might get over there one week, but in order to, the two officers out there, they didn't, it's not going to happen until the following year at the minimum. Only because we have to, we have to hire another officer, uh, and take certified training or she certified training. So you're not doing that today.
You're still providing options for the intersection at one fifty eight and twelve?
All those parts.
On those same weekends?
Yes, we moved to approximately four of those.
That's covering the budget.
Yes. We're also understanding that if there's no all-out attempt, uh, that's going to, that's going to add another forty thousand dollars for the time.
Another how much?
Forty thousand dollars for the time.
That's an addition or a?
That's an addition to it. Just, just to remind you, um, this highway, that intersection is administrative jurisdiction of Department of Transportation. These regulations I want to have to stay down and kitty, it's the kitty holes, uh, traffic jurisdictions, open those to empty. They, the Department of Transportation, they have to be made if you decide to do that.
And they will milk up the cost of it. It's our-
To be honest with you, to be all decided on our man, and I just want you to go on, on record, that I did, that our police部门 has no ties to that department. We're actually playing the kitty hole to that, right? That is not our jurisdiction. I felt that it's our obligation that we're going to create this new left turn. I mean, the accidents, most of them, we've been dealing with that, which we had a couple of, in the test track. Shouldn't even be a kitty hole, which we are, except. My experience with it for about thirty-six years is another way you can control something is if you physically have a person out there to deal with it.
Can you call the motion? We have a motion, we have a motion, council, which is a second to, to set up, uh, no left turn controls on keeping South Dogwood in this country here. All in favor of that, or if, if the motion is needed, you can say aye. All opposed? Motion is not carried to establish any sort of, uh, you try to control on South Dogwood for this year. And I'm hoping in the future, in the next sixty years. Can you put the business, council? The motions?
I think a motion, Mr. Mayor, going to closed session.
Uh, just going back on that motion. No other directions, so I don't have to go here, uh, like the, uh, the, 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 the.